It is three o'clock on Tuesday, July 26, 2022. If we could stand, I'd like to ask Mr. Fendig if he would to pray. And Mr. Toscherson, will you leave us some place?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Bow our head. Heavenly Father, in Jesus' name, we come to you for grace, mercy, and wisdom, and endowment of understanding of your will for the people of Glen County, and for this community and our visitors in today's discussions. Be with all those that, Lord, are still suffering with bouts of COVID and sickness and weaknesses, and heal this community and this nation in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Everyone takes the flag. Stand unharmed. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated.
Our first order of business today is to consider approving and adopting a resolution with the Board of Commissioners of Glen County, Georgia, approving an intergovernmental agreement between Glen County and the City of Brunswick addressing the use and distribution of proceeds from the 2022 Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax, SPOS 2022, and other related items, authorizing the Chairman of the Glen County Board of Commissioners to execute said intergovernmental agreement, repealing prior resolutions in conflict and for other purposes. And Attorney Mumford, if you want to address this for a few minutes?
Be glad to. Mr. Chairman, good afternoon, Commissioners. I think the agenda item says all the high points. This is the agreement, at least the most current agreement of the IGA we discussed last week at your work session. The city has approved it, has executed it. Now it's before the board. But the IGA, intergovernmental agreement, is the agreement that controls the use and distribution of the SPOS proceeds, assuming it gets passed in November. It sets out the project list, the arrangement between the tiers, tiers one and two. It sets out the total amount of estimated revenues, $133 million. It also sets out the term, which is six years. When you have an IGA like this, it is the term length that governs how long collections will occur, not the amount. So it'll continue to be collected for the entire six-year period. Those are the, basically, the high points of that. I can go through it again if the Commission likes, but those are the high points of it. I know we talked about the tiers, one and two, what those mean, how you get to tier two, how you not get to tier two. And this agreement basically sets out all the understandings of the parties as far as the use and distribution of the proceeds, as well as tier two, one and two program categories. If it pleases the Board, happy to answer any other questions the Board may have. There's also a proposed motion before you on the IGA, and that is a suggestion or recommended motion to make if you are inclined to approve it this afternoon.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mumford. Uh, Commissioners, any questions before we move forward? County Manager, any comments you'd like to add to this section? Okay. All right. If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve and adopt the resolution as presented, approving the intergovernmental agreement between Glen County and the City of Brunswick addressing the use and distribution of proceeds from the 2022 Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax, SPOS 2022, and for other related purposes.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Booker, a second by Commissioner Rofalski. Any other discussion on the matter? All right. Then, all in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number two this afternoon, consider approving and adopting a resolution regarding the 2022 Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax, SPOS 2022, calling for an election to be held on November 8, 2022, to impose a special 1% sales and use tax within Glen County, specifying the purposes for which the proceeds of such taxes are to be used, specify the maximum period of time for which such tax shall be imposed, specifying the estimated cost of the capital outlay projects to be funded from the proceeds of such tax, requesting that the Glen County Board of Elections and Registration issue the call for an election to be held on November 8, 2022, approving the form of ballot to be used in such an election and for other purposes. And again, Attorney Mumford, thank you for that lengthy, wordy introduction.
Well, thank you. It saves me a lot of having to go through the actual document to have to go through it. That recites exactly what this does in broad terms, but I'll, you know, go ahead and kind of go through the other high points. So the resolution now before you is the, is actually the resolution that sets in motion the call for the election to actually occur. You just approved the IGA, which is an optional component of SPOS. But with or without the IGA, by law, you have to pass and adopt a resolution that actually sets in motion the call for the Board of Elections to hold the election. This is the operative document that, if it is approved this afternoon by the Board, will be sent over to the Board of Elections. They'll have a special call meeting this week. There's a legal requirement that they now, then they will call the election or call it and then publish the call in the paper, and that sets forth the motion, everything, the mechanics get everything on the ballot for November 8. It does all the other things that are outlined in the agenda item. It does set forth the ballot language. It also sets forth the term, also sets out the project list again, as well as the estimated projected total revenue from the SPOS. Those are the high points, Commissioners. Again, if there's any questions, happy to answer them. Again, there's another proposed motion, number two, for item number two in front of you. If you're so inclined this afternoon to approve this item.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mumford. Uh, Commissioners, any questions, comments? Mr. Fallon?
Nothing to answer.
All right. Then we... Uh, Mr. Chairman, is there anything that you would like to add?
No, sir, none at this time. Thank you, Dave.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Then we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, before we do that, I do want to read some things into the record for this vote that we're about to make. This is my third opportunity to serve Glen County as Commissioner. When I served in the past, I had the great privilege to sit in on two SPOS, five-year SPOS that were voted by the citizens, that were carried out with due diligence. And I'm speaking mainly to District Two because I have a lot of naysayers over there on social media who just say, "I'm never voting for a SPOS. Don't want to ever vote a SPOS," accuse us of mismanagement, misspending, irregular behaviors, all of which are not true and opinionated. One thing I want to remind the citizens of District Two in consideration of this SPOS request coming forward. One is that when visitors come to the state of Georgia, they come to the beach, and 75% of the beach accesses for those visitors open to the public to drive in on or found in Glen County. Only other beach outside of Glen County accessible by public road is Tibeau. That is a tremendous amount of visitorship that comes, as demonstrated by all the records, especially in the last few years. That's 75% of the beach access is found in Glen County. That's people that bring tax dollars. In the last, since I've been on term, only one new hotel has been built on St. Simons. But in this SPOS, coming forth, over 1,500 to 2,000 short-term rental units have been licensed and built with a capacity of more than six people within those units. That is a lot of tax dollars coming in, paying for rooms, for bed tax, going out to spend. They ride with me on my tours. I want you to understand that the market of visitation has substantially changed, and it's not been in hotel rooms. It is in short-term rentals. Also, it is projected from a variety of sources, University of Georgia economics, along Chamber reports, that approximately 44% of our tax dollars inbound to our economy are visitors. I'm saying these things because we have people that are just naysaying SPOS. Here's an interesting thing that you have to remember. With all the visitation coming in, between 30 to 40% of all our police, fire, and emergency rescue are solely to visitors. In other words, that call is going out to a visitor. That is your tax dollar existence right now, paying for that visitor's medical services, treatment, rescue, whatever it is. I want to remind you that the state is up the ante on port expansion. Commissioner Toscherson's district, a fourth berth is going to be added. The amount of imports of automobiles and export bill. Now you have the around-the-state, the investment with Governor Kemp for battery and electric, EV cars, and plants, and trucks is going to make Brunswick the destination. If you're not aware of the policies that have gone forth, the state ports has designated Brunswick to be entirely import and export for vehicles and farm equipment. Savannah is going to be all the boxcars coming in. So the expansion fixing to happen in our economy and visitors, ports activity, all of this taxing. If you know anything about it, reading the traffic records from Deontay, I-95 is at record capacity. And so is the influx from the state coming down out of Atlanta and into our ports in Savannah and into Brunswick. Those are all tax dollars when they fuel, they eat, they pay for tires, all of that. If you've noticed also that our airport activity has resurged now with COVID, and the growth in the last 10 years on that port has been very progressive at the airport. That's not even talking about the fly-in of the private port of St. Simons, which is now the fifth busiest-rated small airport in the United States, in and out traffic. So one of the complaints has been accountability to taxpayers. I don't know any of anybody that's undertaken building a house that's come in on budget and on time anywhere in the last five years with all the issues of COVID with supplies even today. But this Commission has heard the cry for accountability, and we have done several things to produce good accountability in this particular SPOS. One is it's tiered. It has a stated priority, and that money comes in specifically for those tiers. Other is project management. On any project management-sized project that we have within SPOS, the Commission has made a commitment contractually already or in progress for management services. I think the Commission has realized, and the community has realized, to put the burden on our everyday responsibilities of staff, which is undergoing incredible growth right now as we're pouring out, to also take on additional responsibilities of SPOS management and project is outside reasonable request of our staff and employees. You need expert help, and the county has reached out for that. We've also scoped the projects. All of these Commissioners have had numerous town halls, numerous town halls, to listen to taxpayers. And I can tell you that most of you have written in and told us your support, your ideas, and your concerns, and we've incorporated to SPOS. But in my town hall hearings, I have a regular crowd that comes in, and all they say is, "No, no, it's fraud, mismanagement," and that's not true. It's just a narrative that goes on to defeat the tax. And I stand against that. With that, I also want to remind taxpayers the benefits of SPOS in the past. You need to hear what this community has received because voters approved this SPOS and these projects were printed out. And I'm just talking about mainly in my district. A SPOS re- did the complete redo of Neptune Park. It tore down the old casino building. We built a whole renovation of Neptune Park from one end to the other. The expansion of the library, the redo of the theater, installing covers over the atrium where events could be held out, adding the pool, adding a back porch, rocking chairs where people couldn't enjoy the view, actually creating a stage and courtyard. Also, the expansion of meeting rooms for the general public. If you don't remember, before that, the only place you could meet was at the fireplace, at the fire department in the small room. It revolved in the removal and relocation of Demery Park Fire Department, a new fire department out to the airport, a fire department that could house the ladder trucks and new investment of trucks, which SPOS bought, and a fire department out at Lawrence Road, all which directs, directly impacts your fire insurance rate, especially on the south end where buildings are at a premium height. It reduced in reduction of premiums. Fire equipment was purchased with SPOS. It also produced roundabouts to improve traffic over the last 20 years. Demery and Frederica, Kingsway and Frederica Road, Demery and East Beach, East Beach and Ocean, improvements of the gateway, and here's an important thing lest we forget, the approving of 100% of Frederica Road, which was horrendously in bad shape, was supplemented by SPOS. Sidewalks everywhere, out to Hampton Point all the way to the north end, cultural investments that helped projects like the A. Judd Jones Center improve, revitalization of the Coast Guard Station into a museum, Harrington School, Harrington Park, the expansion of the water and sewer plant as it is now was done before there was a joint water sewer. Those taxes still give us the capacity today to meet the needs of St. Simons. All of those assets transferred over to joint water sewer. Look on the future. Innumerable drainage ports, tennis courts, yes, pickleball courts, skateboard park, bathrooms at the Coast Guard Park were built with SPOS funds, new beach accesses, elevation of Johnson Rocks, police equipment, ambulance, ER response equipment, safety equipment, the public safety complex that we now enjoy, which handles communication coordination, all built with SPOS, the 911 complex, which houses our police, our fire properties, the State Patrol. New jail facilities were built, upgrade and renovation of our historical courthouse, this one that is history, and the new one, repair the existing courthouse in brick and roof, IT equipment renovation, and pavings of roads and roads and roads, not on St., just St. Simons, but all over Glen County. These are the benefits that come out of a SPOS that visitors pay an extantal amount for. So I'm very glad to have the honor to be up on this Commission again and so vote a tiered, due diligent work on this. My fellow Commissions have really gone overboard to meet all the criteria of expectation from our citizens to have a great SPOS, and it's my honor to be a part of this vote.
Thank you, Commissioner Fendig. Any other discussion? Then we'll entertain a motion for item number two.
Yes, sir. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve and adopt the resolution as presented, calling for an election to be held on November 8, 2022, to impose a special 1% sales tax and use tax within Glen County and for other related purposes.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, a second by Commissioner Booker. Any other discussion at this time? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Mr. Attorney, do we have any items for executive session?
I believe we do. Mr. Chairman, we have a personnel item to discuss.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I offer a motion that we move to executive session for personnel matters.
Second.
All right. Have a motion by Commissioner Booker, a second by Commissioner Rofalski to go into executive session for personnel issues. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. With that, we stand and raise seats.